Alright, so it's seven o'clock on Monday, May 7th, 2018, and I'll call them in to order, and the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment, silent questions. Is there any declaration of parent just or didn't want to true there? Seeing none. Moving to the minutes of our previous meeting, which is April 16th, 2018, and our special meeting from April 23rd. The mover and seconded for those minutes. Council McKinnon and Council Sanders. Is there any errors or emissions on those minutes? All of them? Nope. All those in favor. Close and that's carried. Going to correspondence. So we have our upcoming council meetings, as well as the FCM conference, the emergency management meeting, which is on June 19th at 10:00 a.m. until noon. And then we have our AMO conference coming up in August. And then correspondence item CC1 is from the Thames Valley District School Board, and it's the community planning and facilities meeting. Item number two is from the County of Middlesex, and it's the wardens golf tournament. Anyone's interested in attending?
I hope to maybe make this supper only. Not to golf, like I might make it there for the autumn, but I won't be golfing.
Okay.
I'm maybe my schedule's really kinda crazy in June, so I'll have a look and when I know a couple more things, I'll let somebody else.
And I'll likely go as long as I'm a non-competitive team. Very not, not good at golfing at all, so. Alright, so we'll go into the item number three, which is from AMO. It's the 2018 to 2020 Board of Directors nominations. Item four is from AMO as well, it's the national housing strategy. Item five is from Blue Water Recycling Association, and it's their board of directors meeting highlights of April 2018. Item six is from FCM, and it's an update. Item number seven is from OMAFRA, and it's the 2018 Premier's Award for Eager Food Innovation Excellence, which we did in 2017, and one of the award recipients from that was Andrew Campbell, which is in our municipality. Item number eight is from SWIFT, and it's the spring 2018 newsletter. Item number nine is from St. Clair Region Conservation Authority, and it's the 2017 annual report. Item number 10 and 11 is from the Assaw Bayfield Conservation Authority, and it's the board of directors meeting, as well as the watershed report for 2018. Item number 12 is from the Ministry of Transportation, and it's the cycle on action plan 2.0. And then item number 13 is from the County of Middlesex, and it's the declaration of the OPA number 11. And then the next two are action items. The first one is from Ernie Hardman and MPP, which is regarding the Bill 16 respecting municipal authority over landfilling sites.
I was forced to force.
Okay. Councilor McKinnon's moving that in the seconded. Council Hendricks. All those in favor. Close and that's carried. And the next one is from the town of Lakeshore, and it's a resolution regarding renovations and demolitions.
That was filed.
Filed.
I was surprised.
I think we got enough rules in hand.
Oh, true.
So it looks like we need a resolution to resolve the council received and filed correspondence items CC1 to CC13 and 15. Deafner Stockman and Council Hendricks. All those in favor. Close and that's carried. Moving on quickly along to our staff reports. And the first one's from Republic Works Manager, Jeff.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we had a request come in from Stephanie, I'm not sure of the last name.
Catrice.
Catrice. She requested to look into, there's a bus stop outside her house that she was concerned about motorists not having enough warning. For when the bus stops, they come up, up over the hill, and the bus is right there. So I looked into, to the signs, and basically the criteria is that there is a stopping distance or a visible distance to allow motorists to stop. And upon looking at the location, we already have truck signs warning that there's a truck entrance there due to poor visibility, so there definitely is a problem with visibility on the hill. The other, the other thing you have to look at is you have to talk to the transporting company or the school boards and see if they have interest in this sign, because technically they have to support the sign. So I contacted the bus company lanes, and they talked to the bus drivers, and there has been a couple incidents that cars have come up over top of the hill and had to slam on the brakes to get stopped. So I think considering these two things, I put forth that, that for your consideration that we install a couple of signs on the hill at, on Moll Ferry just east of Sexton.
Okay. Council McKinnon?
Is that subject to school board approval?
Uh, no.
No?
No. No, they have to request it, or they, or either the bus line or the school board have to, to be in favor of it, but they don't have to, we don't have to send it back to them for approval.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, mover and seconded for the recommendation, Council Hendricks and Deafner Stockman. Is there any more? I just said one question, which kind of seemed odd, but in the future, when there isn't, say, a bus stop there, say that, you know, the child graduates, how do we go about just going back and making sure that that sign is needed in the future?
Yeah, like every year, excuse me, every year, Mr. Mayor, has to be reviewed that sign. And the decision then to, to keep it up or to take it down then, so if, obviously if there's no children or the bus is not stopping there, it comes down with that.
Right, okay. Okay, so it's moved and seconded. All those in favor. Posed and that's carried.
Second report tonight is an information report. I'd just like to get council some information on, on the new month, and a couple of items that took place at the end of April. First of all, there's a couple of small culverts to be replaced on Moll Ferry Drive. Again, it's listed in Port One East of Seed and One West of Sullivan. These two culverts are rotted out, the bottoms are gone in them, and the road is starting to collapse down around them. There's just, I hate ripping up Moll Ferry, but I, we don't have a, we don't have an option there. Dust control will start in May. It'll be planned to match up when we start our maintenance gravel, so we can go right from, when we start the dust control, we'll build a continuet and be finished right up when the maintenance gravel's done, so. So the actual start date will, will shift a little bit, but it will start in about the middle of May. We're looking at grass seed in Scotchmere. In the next, I'd like to get it done this week, but it will be done in the next couple of weeks. Road sweeping will begin in the middle of the month. Due to extensive, or the extension of cold weather in April, I've talked to everybody, sweeping has been delayed throughout all the companies. I know I called to see if we could get that pushed up, and they basically said good luck to me, so. And I talked to Brad in Strathroyd, he said the same thing, their sweepers are two, two weeks to three weeks behind, so. Tenders and quotes are progressing. We should have a good handle by the end of May on, on the majority of them. The only one I'm not going to push out right away is the A gravel for construction. I'm gonna let, let the dust settle a little bit, and then the companies hopefully, when we send it back out June, first of July, they'll be more hungry to, to see another tender come through, so. That one there will, you'll see it come through in June or July. This one, I thought I should put on here just because it's an expensive repair to MAC1. We had an oil pan fail on MAC1, and the part alone was $4,000. It was astronomical.
For an oil pan?
Oil pan. For people, for a Cummings motor of, in a similar truck, $1,200. That's the difference between the part. I looked for aftermarket, couldn't find it. So we looked at, we took the oil pan off, and for $4,000, you can rebuild a lot of things. What we found was, the oil pan is, a few years ago, they coated the oil pan in a, in a hardened plastic to protect it from stone chips, and thinking that that would allow the oil pan to last longer. In fact, it trapped the moisture in behind it. And so when we took the, the plastic coating off, there was nothing left to, to rebuild the oil pan around, so. Anyways, I just thought, point that out. Had nothing to do with the usage or the age of the truck, it, it basically had to do with that plastic coating. We thought at the time when the coating went on, it was a good preventator. It turns out now it couldn't breathe, so. I just thought I'd, I'd better let you know. And then, so then...
Go ahead, Deafner Stockman.
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead.
So then, did we do the other two as well?
No, at the time, it was just MAC1 that this was tried on, to see if it would work. And honestly, obviously we're not, to be honest, in my opinion, a smear of grease on it would have done a lot better job than, than, than the plastic coating on. On a happy note, the local truck safety rodeo was held on the 26th of April. Five counties were represented by 54 drivers, and Richard Elliott finished eighth, and Coulter finished first. He almost had a, a perfect score. Yeah, and even with Richard at eighth, there was a Southwest driver at third overall. This is overall out of all the counties, and Ron Diamond was there, and again, I believe Ron was around 10th. Middlesex County has some good drivers, so I was very impressed, so it's really good. But congratulations for Coulter again for the first.
You're a gift.
Curbs of steel.
Council McKinnon?
To the mayor, to you, just pass along council's congratulations to Coulter and tell him we expect to see him in Toronto.
And so that's basically the end of the, the report. There's really no financial impact, these are just, just an information report, giving you an idea of what's gonna happen in the month of May, so.
Okay, motion then to resolve the council accepted information report repaired by the public works manager. Council Sanders and Deafner Stockman. All those in favor. Posed and that's carried. Okay, is there any other questions at all for Jeff?
I had a question on these culverts actually, why did we put new ones in at the time we did this? Or didn't we replace any culverts on Moll Ferry that time?
I would hope at the time they looked like they were in good shape, but...
Okay, 'cause that hasn't made that many years?
No, they definitely were not replaced at the time. These are not new culverts.
Are they big culverts?
No, 12, 12 inch to the west and 15 inch to the east. And they're not new culverts that have failed, these, the culverts have been in the ground probably, you know, 30 years plus.
Deafner Stockman?
Did we have any major trees come down on the road lately?
There are a couple of, a couple of big spruce trees down in the south end. Not a lot of damage, we were able to push them off the road and keep the roads open, other than Scotchmere and Teich, which I think everybody's aware of, was closed for most of the weekend. No one was trapped, everybody could get in and out, other than a lack of hydro at a couple of places. But other than that, no, we, on the road side of things, we were pretty, pretty good. The county had a lot of debris and hydro lines down a lot on their roads, but, but no, we were pretty good. We, we had to stay late on Friday, do a little bit of debris cleanup on a, on a number of spots in the south. But by the time you got past Murphy, you could see the winds down, so the lower half took, took the brunt of it, and the north half, not that we didn't have stuff down, but it was the south half that took the brunt of the damage.
And I think there was good communication between yourself and Jennifer to get information out on Facebook, 'cause every time there was something going on, I saw it was on there. Also, that was the first time I saw the, the post that you did, which was the warning people of the high winds. If it wasn't actually for the Facebook page, I wouldn't actually realize, I didn't obviously listen to the radio or was on the app, watching the news earlier in the day to know that something was gonna be happening. So it was good to have that information out.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, there was, we did, I think Kathy informed you that Saturday night, our email system kind of did a little bit of, there should have been more updates to you, but I, with Jennifer on Facebook, that was probably what saved us there, so.
And before we go on to the next report, I do see your hand out there. During council meetings, we don't allow the public gallery to ask questions or anything like that, so.
I was just gonna put a little input in, I was gonna say you tried lineax on the oil pan?
That's, that's what was on the oil pan was lineax. And, and, Mr. Mayor, the, the pan where the, the lineax didn't crack, it was near the top where the bolts were. Didn't seal, and so the moisture was able to come in around the top of it, and once it got in the top of it, it just worked its way right down the side. Yeah, it was the lineax. It's tough stuff, and where it sealed, it sealed, but where it didn't, it just, it just disintegrated.
Sorry about that, right?
No, that's okay. That's why I figured I'd let you know that I wasn't ignoring you, I was just letting, yeah. So we just need a motion now to resolve the council, that the report of the public works manager is presented. Deafner Stockman and Council McKinnon, all those in favor. Posed and that's carried. So moving to the clerk's report, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll just have to bear with my voice tonight. My first report is regarding the council code of conduct. The council received in their council package for the April 16th council meeting. I was just looking for council feedback on the proposed council code of conduct that's been updated from 2014.
Council McKinnon?
Everything was covered.
Deafner Stockman?
Took me two sessions to read it, I fell asleep halfway through.
Council Sanders or Council Hendricks?
No, would you read for me?
Pretty thorough.
The only question I have for Jennifer, and I already asked her, is the, just the comparison of what ours looks like compared to the counties, because if we're gonna be looking at having one integrity commissioner kind of overlooking the county and also the lower tiers, just to make sure they're very similar, so then the individual, whoever's higher, does not have to know several different codes of conduct, and you mentioned that they're very, yeah.
Yeah, I used three different municipalities within Middlesex County that had, there's more up to date, and I compiled it all together and made sure that, for the most part, pecuniary interest was covered, and that'll lead into my next report. Because of the Bill 68 changes, council is required to put their pecuniary interest into writing. So to help move that along in assist with council, I've spoken with other municipalities to see what their procedure is with that. And they basically have a template for council to input their information, and then it becomes a written statement that they submit to the clerk. And once they sign off on that, then that becomes a public document, and I'll have it available for the public to see. And that will be coming to all future meetings beginning May 22nd.
That was gonna be my question, do we have to fill out for the ones that I did before that?
Uh, no, based upon not having the procedure put in place. But now that it is put in place, and now that council has approved this, once council approves the code of conduct moving forward, that will be all put in place, and I'll have it set up here and just have it figured out how I'm gonna set it up so it's visible for council to see.
Okay, we'll go back to the, just the, we'll have the motion for the code of conduct, and then we'll, yeah.
Yes, sorry, yes, I put it up in detail.
No, that's okay, so we have the motion to resolve that council approved the council code of conduct policy as presented by the clerk as amended. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor. Posed and that's carried. And then with the next one, is there any questions on the code of conduct regarding the declare pecuniary interest? No?
No.
Okay, so a motion to resolve that council accepts the report, council code of conduct declaring pecuniary interest review as prepared by the clerk. Deafner Stockman and Council McKinnon, all those in favor. Posed and that's carried. Is that sufficient for me?
Yes, it is everything for me.
And you still want this motion too?
Yes, please.
Okay, please, any questions at all for Jennifer? None, a motion to resolve that council accepts the reports of the clerk as presented.
Um, just, just one question on page, I think it's five of 17. There was two WSIB premiums paid, one was small.
We're, we're not for that one.
Oh, okay, sir.
I noticed that before we started the meeting, the coffee was already on the path already, so. Somebody was in a rush. Okay, so we still need that motion to resolve that council accepts the report of the clerk as presented. Council Hendricks and Deafner Stockman, all those in favor. Posed and that's carried. Now we'll hop into the CAO Treasury Report, with the first one being the invoices. Kathy?
My first report is the invoice payment approval list from April 13th to May 3rd, 2018, in the amount of $150,405.83.
Word is Council McKinnon has a question.
Page five of 17 and seven of 17, there's two WSIB premiums, and both denoted for April, and I just wondered why. One is on page five of 17, I think, is that fire Kathy?
It's 6120?
Yes.
So that's for the administration, and the other is for the janitorial.
Okay.
We are responsible to pay WSIB, 'cause she does not have WSIB.
So that smaller one will always be janitorial?
Yes.
And on six to 10?
Okay, so that's for the fire chief, and then for the firefighters.
Okay, so those are separated as well?
Yes, it's only for reporting at year end, it's just more convenient to do them as we go through.
Makes sense, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Council Sanders?
I don't have a lot of questions, but I'm looking at page four, 17, Middlesex 4H, and we donate to several salvage women's rule of four counties advocacy children health foundation.
We're all through through the budget.
I realize that, but, okay. But why do we have certain ones and don't do other ones? That's my question. Never do the matter.
If I may, we did a report two years ago at the budget time on what the traditional grants were, and these were what were accepted as that, and they've been on the budget for the last two years as the same listing.
Could change about the budget time.
Yes.
Okay, no problem.
Any other questions on the accounts? Deafner Stockman?
On the paper page 10, 6310, 8303, do we already have an 18 pickup?
I think it's a title, it should be 13.
And just a question related to that, like we have, normally we've, maintenance has been gone through the dealership. I see now we're with somebody within the municipality, a little less expensive or...
Yeah, we chose that just for the order pickups. We're really not getting the benefit of warranty and, and follow-up on a lot of that stuff, so we chose someone a little more local, a little bit more cost-effective for, for the basic repairs.
Thank you.
Okay, there's, did anything else, Deafner Stockman? No. Okay, so a motion to resolve that council approved the account listings for the period April 13th to May 3rd, 2018, in the amount of $150,405.83 as presented. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor. Posed and that's carried.
The next one is the updated logo design for the branding strategy. I sent the comments back to CR Graphics for revision, and these are the two versions that they have provided this time, with the separation between the A and the M. One has more rays of sunshine and one has slightly fewer, so just looking for council's feedback as we narrow it down.
Council Hendricks?
I like number one, I think. I just like number one better.
I like number two.
I like number two.
Definitely, I do. And I didn't really have a preference.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Two looks a little brighter.
Yeah, with the extra red.
I like number two, I'm not gonna say why, but I like number two more.
I think the separation of white really helps to distinguish now between A and M. I think it's quite nice.
And now that I look at it, number one kinda looks like the Boston logo.
Oh, there you go.
So...
Are we gonna vote on this tonight?
I would like to move forward on it as quick as possible, so we can get something.
Okay, I'll make the motion, I'll be going with number two.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor. Posed and that's carried. So with that Kathy, how will we be getting our report from Jeff, or you, about the signs and all of my stuff?
We would like to work together, just to find the locations and what signs we will be able to do in-house, and what prices we could find for that, what the cost of the supplies are, and whether staff will be available to put any signs up. So we'll have to work on that going forward, now that we have the design, we get the final proofs and from CR Graphics, then we'll be able to move forward on getting some pricing and what we'll do next. So the next report deals with tenders and quotes that were that. The first one is the Philip Strain 2017 tender. There were two tenders submitted by the May 1st, 2018 deadline. They were opened at 1:30 on Tuesday, May the 1st, by Dan U. Superintendent, myself. We have sent them to Spreets for review. Vanbury Drainage, the subtotal was $85,480 plus HST. And AG Hater Contracting bid $91,750 plus HST. Both were under the engineer's estimate for the cost of construction, and it's been recommended that the tender from Vanbury Drainage be accepted.
By Council Sanders, sent by Deafner Stockman. Meeting discussion. All those in favor. Posed and that's carried.
The next one was for the McKean Drainage, 2017. Again, the tender's closed on May 1st, and we're open shortly after that. The first tender was from Vanbury Drainage and Bulldozing Limited in the amount of $49,550 plus HST. And the second one was from AG Hater Contracting Limited, and for $52,512 plus HST. They were reviewed by the engineer, and it's been recommended that Vanbury Drainage be awarded the contract.
Sent by Council McKinnon, sent by Council Sanders. The discussion. All those in favor. Posed and that's carried.
Next is quote number 08, 2018, for the grass cutting and trimming. The quotes were issued on April 13th. Thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and closed on Monday, April the thirtieth, there were three quotes submitted and they were in front of you tonight, uh, Andy Pavy, Pavy Lawn Care. The total for the aggregate for all the grass to be cut once a week is eight hundred and forty-five dollars, spring cleaning at thirty-five dollars per hour, all plus HST. Vandy's Lawn and Landscape Maintenance, the overall cost is six hundred and ten dollars per week with a spring cleanup at thirty-two fifty per hour, and Muller's Groundkeeping. Five hundred and ten dollars plus spring cleanup at twenty-five dollars per hour.
Counsel McKinnon?
Did, uh, the road superintendent or yourself, Kathy, have any trouble with Muller's last year, was it Muller's that it's for?
It was Vandy's last year, it was Vandy's last year, they've done it the last two years, we did a two-year contract and they did twenty, sixty, twenty, seventeen.
Oh, okay. That's right. Yeah. Were you happy with them last year?
Overall, yes, there were a couple of times we had to give them calls and get them back into gear, but overall.
We never had, we never did have Muller's.
No.
No?
No.
No, Muller's have never been here before.
That's somebody new.
That's new.
Do we wanna go with a new one again or stay with the one, man, he's a little bit more money, but are we comfortable with him now? Pavy is out of, out of reach. How big a difference is there between the three?
I'd, uh.
What was Pavy again?
Eight, eight, four, forty-five, eight forty-five, if you add in once a week at every place.
Yeah, and, and the next one?
Vandy's six-ten and Muller's was five hundred.
Did, did Muller's give us a reference, anyone with a good job?
I asked and I have two references to check on that, should we choose them.
I'd pre- I'd prefer to take the lower one if the references prove that, uh, they do a good job.
Deputy Stockman?
As much as it's more economical to go with the lower one, I'm, uh, very reluctant to do that because, you know, we had to. Work with Vandy's a, a number of times to, uh, get them to, to quote-unquote be up to snuff, so, uh. I'd be very reluctant to go with the, the lowest one because I think there's. Sure, it, it may be strictly dollars, but if the quality isn't there, then, uh, I'm not comfortable going that route.
Counsel Sanders?
Yeah, I agree with Nick, I think once you've got Vandy sorted, train it now when he knows what we expect. For them few dollars, I think I, I, I think I have to kind of agree with Nick that I would go with the same Vandy again. Because, well. Once we start on another one, we gotta, you know, you never know, and I know it's a little cheaper, but you gotta start fighting again, I don't think we wanna do that very bad, do we? I don't know. My opinion is I would go with the one we had the last two years.
Counsel Hendricks?
I've got a lot of flack about the, uh, ball tournament, the condition of the park last year, so, um. Yeah, I, I would, uh, if somebody's charging less. And it, it may just mean that they don't understand the scope of the job or, or they're maybe not equipped enough, I like. I, I don't know, but I, I agree with, uh, Nick and Gerald that we don't wanna have any less of a standard than we've had the last couple of years.
I like baby, but it's just a deer. I really like to, but.
If, if, if I may, we did amend the quote this year, so there is a clause in there that the Kerwood Ballpark requires two complete cuts, including trimming and removal of all grass clippings and the two weeks prior to the annual August Ball Tournament.
Yes.
Generally have the second weekend of June, those dates to be confirmed. So there is a clause in there that all contractors were aware of that they would be required to do that, so.
Okay. So we have the, uh, three options there, if somebody wants to make a motion of some sort?
I'll move, then we go with Vandy's.
Okay, so resolve that council accepts the tender from Vandy's Lawn and Landscape Maintenance for grass cutting and trimming for the two thousand and eighteen slash nineteen season? Is that how the tender is out for the two years?
Yes, yes.
So that's moved by Counsel Sanders and seconded by Deputy Stockman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed and that's carried.
Okay, uh, the next tender is the two thousand and eighteen maintenance gravel tender. Uh, the gravel tenders were issued on April the eighteenth and closed on Tuesday, May the first at two PM. The tenders were opened at two fifteen on May the first by the Public Works Manager and the CAO Treasurer. The two thousand and eighteen budget is two hundred thousand dollars, the quantity in tones was for fourteen thousand tones and the price per tone. CR Chitik Construction Limited, fourteen dollars and twelve cents, Clarence Carter and Sons, twelve dollars and eighty-three cents. Mackenzie and Henderson Limited, twelve dollars and twenty-three cents, and Jensen Construction, fourteen dollars and fifty cents. The recommendation is to accept the tender from Mackenzie and Henderson Limited for the supply of fourteen thousand tones of granular gravel in the amount of twelve dollars and twenty-three cents per tonne plus HST. Subject to the submission of the proof of insurance, the hold harmless agreement, and WSIB certificate as recommended by the Public Works Manager.
The recommendation there, do you have a move or a second for that?
Sound good.
Counsel McKinnon and Counsel Hendricks, any discussion? Deputy Stockman?
Um, number one, whereabouts are we doing the maintenance gravel and number two, how does that compare to, uh, last year's price?
Uh, we're doing, um, we're doing, uh, we're doing, um, the Northwest Corner, so, uh, Wilson Morris, uh, that sort of area. And, uh, the prices actually are a little bit thicker. And I, 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 I chalk that up to the difference of going all the way down to Scottsdale and Canadian gravel compared to, uh, going with the gravel on Morris and Wilson's. A little closer to the pit, a little bit, a little bit quicker, uh, for trucking.
Yeah, good, good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, opposed and that's carried.
The next tender was for the two thousand and eighteen Baco, uh, tenders were issued Thursday, April the nineteenth. And closed on Tuesday, May the first at three PM, they were opened at three fifteen PM on Tuesday, May the first by the Public Works Manager and the CAO. And representative from Nortrak's was in attendance at the opening. The two thousand and eighteen budget amount was one hundred and forty-eight thousand, the, uh, submitted tenders were from Casera Group Alvinston. One hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars plus HST. Nortrak's Canada Inc., one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars plus HST. Stronghold Limited Partnership, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars plus HST. And Tormont, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars plus HST. Uh, the Public Works Manager took the tenders and reviewed them and he is satisfied that the tender from the Casera Group Alvinston does meet all of the standards as set in the tender. And his recommendation is to accept the tender from Casera Group.
The recommendation, C- Counsel McKinnon, you're moving the recommenda- recommendation and seconded?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Hendricks, any discussion? Deputy Stockman?
Uh, wh- what's the difference between, uh, the, the case from Caseras and the case from Stronghold, like that T three?
Three thousand dollars.
No, I'm surprised, I'm not, it's not the dollar. T, the, the, the T three, what's?
So the tier, the T three, I believe, uh, Caseras are pointing out that it's a tier three engine, which is, uh, they're right now, the industry's either just change over to a tier four engine. Which requires a higher level of pollution control on it, and so Canada right now is right on the verge in the, in the, um, the heavy equipment market for that changeover. So they've quoted the tier three engine, um, which comes in, I believe, uh, that gives them a little bit, uh, that's where the price difference.
Okay, so we don't need DEF for that one?
We don't need DEF for that one.
But as far as all the other ones, they're all exactly the same pretty well?
Uh, I can tell you that Norjon's for sure was a, a, a tier three motor also. Um, but the Cat was a tier four, um, and I'm just not, I'm not positive about the Stronghold because, to be honest, I didn't, uh. I didn't look at the Stronghold because of the same, the same machine being owed at a lower price than what the Caseras as, as they represented that machine, so.
Uh, just one additional, is that, uh. With, with the trade or, uh, we're moving the, the old one by ourselves?
I figured we'd move the, the old one by ourselves, just because of the age of that one. Um, we'll come up with some other, with some options whether, 'cause sometimes when a machine gets that old, it almost becomes a hindrance to someone to, to take it. Um, and that's the only reason that I, that I didn't go with it.
Thanks.
But that old hole ain't worth much money, except for it's old, it's, almost take the hole off and just give it for a loader around the yard. Anyway, these holes are all comparable in size, power-wise, weight-wise.
Y- y- yeah, the, the, the tender laid out, uh, horsepower, torque, uh, digging capacity, uh, size, uh, everything from tires to engine to hydraulics, pumps. And all of them met the standards, um, and they're all, they're all, in fact, uh, to be honest, the, uh, Casera hole actually was a little bit more powerful and a little bit more stronger than some of the holes offered. Yeah, no, they all met the standards, okay?
Yep.
Mr. Connor? Even though it was over the budgeted amount, uh, the others were under, so we're, it's a wash pretty well.
The net cost is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twelve, because we do get a rebate on a portion of the HST, so we were under budget for that one.
By what? We had one hundred and forty-eight budget, right?
Just about nine thousand.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, so that was moved and seconded, there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed and that's carried.
So the second part, uh, when Jeff was doing the tendering for the Baco, uh, he also put out the option to supply a rotary boom, which would be attached to the Baco as opposed to a rotary boom for the tractor. Uh, it's in consideration of the safety, the, uh, submission of the prices, we did it as an option with the tender, uh, they were done at the same time and, uh, opened at the same time as the rest of the tender. The Casera Group Alvinston, the bid was twelve thousand, ninety-five dollars plus HST, Nortrak's Canada, twelve thousand, five hundred plus HST. Stronghold Limited Partnership, fourteen thousand, three hundred plus HST, and Tormont was sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars plus HST. Uh, the recommendation is that we, uh, uh, purchase a rotary boom from the Casero Baco Group as an attachment to the Case Baco as bid.
Right.
Any recommendation there?
I'll move.
Okay, Counsel Sanders and Counsel Hendricks, any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried.
And the next one is for the trailer, uh, the tender was issued for a two thousand and eighteen deck over trailer. On Friday, April the twentieth and closed on Tuesday, May the first at one PM, the quotes were opened at one forty-five PM by the Public Works Manager and the CAO Treasurer. There were two bids, both from Blue Water Trailers, the first one was for a twenty-foot overall deck in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars plus HST. And the other one was for a twenty-five foot overall deck in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. The public manager, Public Works Manager reviewed the tenders and has recommended that we, uh, purchase the twenty-foot overall deck in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars plus HST. Which is a little bit over the budgeted amount.
Okay. So if there are recommendations, if somebody wants to move that, or is there any discussion? Okay, Counsel Hendricks moving it, seconded by Counsel Sanders, any discussion? Deputy Stockman?
So, uh, when, when you talk about deck over, number one, what, what does that refer to and when they're talking about that five-foot dove?
Uh, deck over is so the deck sits above the wheels, so there won't be any fenders. So the reason why we go with this, um, it makes it a little higher, sits a little higher above, 'cause obviously it's, but when you load it with culverts, when you go to unload the culverts, the culverts just roll right off or give the tape and right off without having to try and get them up over the fenders.
Yeah.
Um, which saves you from damaging the fenders and stuff, and really to be honest, if we're gonna use this trailer for culverts or catch basins or loading and unloading stuff, uh, we wanna deck over with it, so we're not hurting the fenders. Um, the dovetail, we added the dovetail to it just to allow, uh, equipment to be loaded on it a little easier, so what it does is the back portion does slope off a little bit. And is still part of the trailer itself, and then the ramps go on the end of it. Um, you can have one that goes straight back, but your ramps are a little more, uh, longer and a little more angled on, so we included the dovetail on it just to give the option of putting equipment if we chose to put packers or something to drive up on it, so.
Yeah, and that would make it a little more money, uh, if you, the dove, to put that on.
The dovetail, exactly, you add a little bit, you know.
Yeah, but I think you'll like it.
And, and one additional question, with all the trailer manufacturers around, I'm surprised that we only got a bid from one.
Yeah, to the mayor, uh, we did send it out to, uh, other manufacturers, um, when we originally contacted to get, or when I contacted to get some pricing earlier in the year. Uh, we seemed to have, uh, interest in, in supplying a trailer, but when it came time to open the quotes, uh, Blue Water was the only one that actually brought in their, uh, brought in their quotation to us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would, if, if I may, we, uh, direct emailed it to, um, three emitters and then we also posted on our website, so it was open to the public, so.
Okay, because like you see Action doing all kinds of advertising and they've got empty trailers there and.
They, they, uh, to the mayor, um, they were the ones that we contacted to start the process. Uh, they knew the, the, the quotation was coming, um, the official quotation was coming to them, um, that we weren't just using their original, uh, material. And I acknowledge, he did acknowledge that he was interested in receiving the new, the new quotation, um, but I never did hear back.
It's a, it's a, it's a bumper hitch though, it's not a goose.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a ball.
So we could hook it on any beam.
Hooking on any, yeah, we're keeping it, yeah, we're keeping it very clean and.
Right. Yeah.
I just have, uh, two questions. Uh, the first one is with the trailer, do we have any racks to go around it or are we planning on just having it so there's, it's just the flat?
At the, we're not, uh, I'm not, uh, ordering any racks, we're gonna get the trailer here, get using it.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I've talked to the crews about, once we see what we wanna put on it, uh, for instance, uh, for construction, we'd like to build, uh. We built some bins that can carry the barrels and the, and the, and the barricades to then haul right out rather than for putting everything back at pickup trucks. So I would think as we get using the trailer, we'll build our own rack systems with whatever we're gonna use on it. Because, yeah, we will need something depending on what we're using, whether it's, you know, putting, we were just talking about that today, would've been nice to have it for to pick up some of the, the limbs and, and stuff. We could load it right on the trailer, take it to the landfill and push it off with the, with the Baco, would've been nice, but, uh, obviously that's, it'll come, it'll, it'll come, but yeah, no, we plan on building our own or, or custom building our own trucks.
Okay, and then the, uh, second question I had was, do our current pickup trucks, do they have the, like, the brake receiver and everything for the lights or are we going to have to put that in?
Currently, um, the, um, the utility truck or the, the main truck over at Adley here that, uh, the newer GMC is outfitted with, uh, the trailer, the proper hitch and the, and the lights. Um, currently the Dodge is not, um, it does have a ball on it, but it's not up to, it, we, we need some upgrades to, uh, with the trailer, like, for the, the brake package. Uh, the one in, um, Metcalf right now is, it's never, it doesn't even at this point pull a trailer, so we, we would look at, um, the switch over when the, um, the building, the Ford comes over and see what it's got on board, so.
Okay.
Um, ideally down the road, it would be nice that, uh, as things go on, that we would have a, a truck, an extra truck that'll come, will be fully designed.
Yeah.
Uh, with a, with a full hitch underneath, yeah, rather than a lumber hitch.
Yeah.
Question you asked earlier.
Perfect, okay. Okay, so that was moved by Counsel Hendricks and seconded by Counsel Sanders, if there's no more questions, all those in favor, opposed and that's carried. Okay, so that was moved by Counsel Hendricks and seconded by Counsel Sanders. If there's no more questions, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
And my final report is an update on the landfill and a temporary closure request. Um, effective June the second, the waste collected by the, at the roadside by Blue Water Recycling is being taken to the Twin Creeks landfill. At the school road landfill, we have to do some work on the monitoring wells to be in compliance with the M L U C C inspection. As well, um, Public Works Manager Jeff Lilla advised you earlier that the leachate system needs some review and we put some money in the budget for that. So as we've been discussing what's going on out there, uh we've requesting counsel to support us in having the school road landfill closed on a temporary basis, effective May thirty-first to August thirty-first, I guess that's not May thirty-first, it should be June first, like the first of June. We'll have it open on the very first Saturday of June and then close right after that. Uh, we'll have uh the contractor go in and, and clean up the landfill, close everything off, um, do some restoration work, and then have uh everything in place to go ahead and get the uh well work done and hopefully review the mon- the leachate system and have that undertaken while it's closed and then before it reopens, have the new cell dunk after the monitoring well and leachate system have been reviewed, um, depending on what needs to be done at the leachate system, whether it gets repaired this year or we just get the review done and the repairs go into next year, depending on the cost of the estimated repairs. So we're just looking for council's approval to do that. Um, Callum Road will remain open on the last Saturday of each month. And it is just a temporary closure until we can get the work completed.
So people from here could go to Callum?
Yes.
Right, my lips will be, yep, Nick.
Deppner Stockman?
And as, if we're still open the, the first Saturday in June, it's really only July and August, so it's only two months that we'll be down.
Yeah.
Yes, we anticipate being back open by August the thirty-first, unless it rains all of July, we may find, we may have an issue, but I'm hoping that we will have enough time to get all the work done at school landfill, ensure the safety of the contractors that are out there, clean it up, and get the new cell built before we reopen in September.
Okay, Counsel Sanders?
So people will know and decide a township that they can go to Callum, will it be notified or will it be posted or?
Signage was posted last Saturday, because it was the first Saturday of the month. We wanted to make sure that before people showed up next month, that they were aware, that they would have one more time there and then they could be redirected to Callum on the last Saturday.
Well, well, go on, you know, yep.
Yes, and we'll also get it posted on our Facebook and our website, so that people are well aware that it's there.
Yep.
Any other questions at all? Nope, so we need a motion to resolve that council supports the temporary closure of, yep, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, just, just one thing, I, I, we open Callum once a month. Um, and as we close down Adelaide, um, I'm just wondering, um, I was talking to Joe about it.
Yes.
And he had a concern about if we are only open one day a month, that the volume of traffic into Callum might be quite high. And he was concerned about the size of, of the area in there. And he was wondering whether it should be two days, two days a month to allow.
So the first and the last Saturday, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And that was what Joe was concerned, that was the first thing he said, is it's pretty tight in there. If they get lined up on the road on a Saturday, it could be a little bit.
I didn't think there was that much volume, but if he thinks there is, then we better have another day.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
So we will open Callum the first Saturday and the last Saturday of, of July and August.
Yep. Yep, I think that's a good idea, yep, yep.
Yeah.
'Cause I didn't realize there was that much going there, but there must be, 'cause the traffic comes there most of the time.
Just, just anticipating that people will leave there and want to go dump it, it may help if there is any dumping.
Yep, mm-hmm.
If they go head south, then they will be able to get rid of their rooms as well instead of leaving it at the doorstep or on the side of the road.
Yes. Yep.
It's a good option that people can go that direction. We'll post it, again, we'll be posted that they can go to Callum and then it will be open on the Saturdays.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if someone did show up, there'll be a sign there saying you can go to Callum. So if someone misses the.
Yeah, yeah, if they happen to go there, they'd say, yep, let's see if it's loaded up or to dump along the road or out the road.
That only makes sense, 'cause somebody that has it already loaded up, they're wanting to dump it somewhere and would rather it dumped in the landfill.
Yeah, exactly, yep, no, that's good.
It may still end up.
But it's quite a road.
Chances are it doesn't. Well, we're given the opportunity.
Yes, it's an opportunity to dump it somewhere.
Exactly.
You, you just need to patrol that road that.
You saw Mike do that Saturday, all day, open up.
I go, I go Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon and in between, Tupperberry gets dumped along the ditch, like.
Oh, well, yeah, that happens everywhere.
People are strange.
All right, so we have the recommendation there, should we change that during?
Yeah, we'll add that the Callum landfill will be open for the days that the school road landfill is closed.
Okay, do that, Deppner, so they move our seconded to that?
Joe knows, Joe's the man that's looking out.
Deppner Stockman and seconded by Counsel Sanders, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Kathy?
No, I haven't done.
Okay, is there any questions at all for Kathy? Nope, seeing none, a motion to resolve that council accepts the report of the C A O Treasurer as presented. Okay, Counsel Hendricks and Counsel McKinnon, in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Okay, um, other business, anything else for? Nope, just wanted to mention two things that were kind of interesting at county council at the last meeting, um, that I would recommend kind of looking into. The one is, at the last two meetings, we've had a presentation from Impact and they're just explaining how uh they go about the assessment of properties and how there's going to be the new assessment cycle coming out. Um, I believe it's starting for next year, um, as well as how they go about actually assessing the properties. It goes by, um, you know, residential and, and agriculture goes by the actual sales assessments. Whereas commercial and industrial, they take different items in looking at that and just say how much those properties are assessed. So it's quite interesting to, to look into that. And the second item, and there's a report on there, is regarding the legal services. So right now, um, there's uh just the simple process of, um, using the, the county services for, for legal. And what the county's looking at right now is having some type of, of agreement between the county and the lower tiers. So then we don't go, the county doesn't get in a position where, you know, we have a fleet of, you know, legal services and then in say next year, all the lower tiers say, we don't wanna use you guys anymore. And then they're not stuck with having uh too many people in, in that department when they don't need to. They also have, um, going to have a legal kind of aide person in there is what Deppner, Mayor Stockman was asking me at last meeting in regards to billing and billing it out, um, more frequently instead of doing it kind of at the end of, end of the year. So that's going to be helping out a bit a lot, just uh that employee's already in there, so that will be, um, happening where we're not going to be stuck with a, you know, several bills at the end of the year for that whole year, so, yeah.
So it's gonna be the same planning, it's gonna be a part of the, uh, the, the levy?
Yeah.
No. No, so this is going to be very similar to I T services. So, um, with planning, the reason that was put on the levy is because you could see a correlation between the, um, the assessment from each municipality to the county and the amount of use there would be. Whereas I T and legal, it all depends on what's happening in each municipality. So, um, there, you can't put that on the levy because, you know, if strata cleared up, they play a, a larger amount, but I think that could be using the services a lot more, so it would never work.
No.
Well, and, and I would not be at all in favor of that, since basically fee for service.
No. No.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, uh, all the C A Os or clerks, I'm not sure who got it, they got an email, I think, earlier today regarding that. So they'll be reviewing that and probably bringing something forward, um, in the next little while.
Hopefully in the next meeting, yes.
Okay, there you go. Okay, so that's all that I have, is there anything else? Seeing none, we'll go on to our bylaws, so we missed one bylaw. Uh, it's resolved that all three rulings be given to bylaw number twenty-five, twenty-eighteen, confirm council proceedings and that the bylaw be signed by mayor and clerk and the court with C L be attached. Deppner Stockman and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed, carried. And a motion to adjourn at eight P M. Deppner Stockman and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed, carried.